Yes.
All right, so we have one matter left. Maggie Fargo Williams. We need for two variants, there's one is the front yard setback and the other is the allowable stories issued. John, before you begin, what is ETA Fargo LLC?
That's our owners' shell corporation apparently to protect themselves. I don't know, it's, they named it Fargo knows. And, uh, used to work selling. No, no, no. Whatever, they made an LLC.
You realize that?
The tax authority can't subpoena this tape, you know that.
No, I, we've had a lot of questions about who this is. It's a couple of dining houses and they're with their kids and they're going back to eat at the park.
It doesn't look like they're in the house yet, though.
No, they bought it and they've, they've actually rented it to the, um, the couple that owns the yoga. The way six months.
There's nobody here, only went by.
Yeah. Uh, but what's there now? But, well, you're involved in what you're talking about.
Right, it's not much. Well, I mean, actually, some of the variants are related because of previous foundation.
Right. Thank you for speaking on that one. If you have any questions.
So, um, the rest of the request thing, the first one, which is the front yard setback related to two, two stories. The existing, the existing house is this, um, foundation basically from this point over the existing foundation, a portion of that, uh, house is extended to the existing front yard. That portion of the house kind of gabled roof on the end, we're actually reducing the volume in that area and we're going to apply roofs, there's actually a, a reduction in volume on the, on the area that is protruding. The other thing that's mentioned on the front yard is, uh, this wall here. There's a retaining wall that does not come up above grade on this side, but does come up above grade on that side. And typically retaining walls would not be a front, would not be a setback related issue, but because as this retaining wall comes, as the driveway goes down and this retaining wall increases in height, there's a point at which it exceeds six feet. So that from that point at which it exceeds six feet, it's considered building and therefore is, um, limited by front yard setback.
What's the maximum, should the height of that retain wall?
It goes to, it goes to, it goes to about eight feet before, you know, it's, it's a, an area underneath I can show you. So it starts at like four feet, driveway comes down and it's only counted from six to eight feet of building.
And what's the distance, when it's six eight?
Uh, it's forty five, six forty five, twenty seven feet. As opposed to required four.
No, but this is, like, six forty six, it was just, it made that, so the six eight, that looks the length of that.
Oh, right. Counting the, uh, distance from this corner of the house, we counted it from that immediate. So, um, and the other, the other request is for stories, so if we look at the, um, so the existing house right now, the front, front elevation is here, you can see it's really a, a story and a half building from the street, and, but the, uh, walkout basement is counted as a story. So this is, uh, considered two and a half, like, oh, even though it's street, probably, it's, uh, its height from the street is, you know, under twenty feet. So what we're proposing, that's the existing building, that's the existing building. So our proposed building is, um, is a similar condition where there are portions of it that are three story, if the basement that faces the rear yard is considered. So, um,
Which it is.
Right. So, uh, so here is the, here is the elevation that faces away from the street, the western elevation. So we have one, two, and then a third story over a portion of the building. The third story is over approximately forty percent of the footprint and sixty percent of the footprint is two story. We have three stories for about, um, forty percent and two stories for about, um, sixty percent. Uh, the building is under the height requirement, it's below thirty five foot height requirement. Uh, we had done this visual impact study about how the mass of the building affects river views. Um, the pipeline board was satisfied with that, it's basically doesn't have an impact on river views. The impact is to a single homeowner, to the east of them, and we've reviewed the problems with them, they don't feel it.
They're the people right across the street at like, is it ninety?
Uh, I believe so.
They're ninety.
Yeah, we're ninety, it's, it's, it's the Hall of Wells.
Who wrote the letter, who wrote it?
Yeah, I know, I know, but I saw the letter just to put it clear where I was at, I assumed it would be the direction.
So if you look at the visual, did we, gave you the?
Yes.
The visual impact study is basically focused most entirely on there.
Right.
On there, yeah, so it's, it's them, right, so that, that's the, how it would happen.
So you assume that was the case.
Can I just get your letter?
I'm sorry, can somebody? Can I sit?
Well, you said it's below thirty five, so what is it there?
Uh,
I guess we're backwards.
It's thirty four seven.
So your height's within five inches and your coverage is within point two percent?
Yes, coverage is, uh, cover, coverage.
There's an applicant, an applicant that will never be back here again, right?
This is, this is, well, also, you know, this is one of these applicants that we have, that we say we want to put a pool in a year from now, we want to put a cool one, and we're like now, so we have heard you on that, we're like, no, if you want to put a cool in, we'll, you know, do it now, so, that's one of the reasons you're saying that.
Can you give us the front, uh, elevations?
So this is the front elevation.
Of existing houses?
Of the proposed existing.
Is that what you, that's, what is that, is that the, I'm sorry, what is that, what are we looking at every year?
This is the front elevation proposed.
That is.
Yes, so it's a, it's a very, um, uh, abstract elevation compared to what's there. So one of the things I just wanted to say is part of what the design is, which we went from at the pipeline board level is this is a passive house, which is a super insulated, high efficiency house, it's one of the few, there's been like two that have been built in Westchester, they're being built more in New York City, and what it is, is that the, the, uh, wall assembly, so like a typical wall would be maybe a six inch, seven to six inch wall, this wall is about eighteen inches thick, filled with insulation, so, and it has an air barrier, so the thing becomes so, it has an, an air barrier in it, it becomes so well insulated that, you know, in the wintertime, it would be about the energy associated with the hair dryer that keeps this thing heated.
And that's where you can have a flat roof.
Yeah, part of that is the, well, the flat roof, but part of what's happened with that is that at the roof package, we have like twenty six inches of roof assembly, uh, between some little floors where we have, so we have this thing, so what ends up happening is it may be the height, it, it gave us grief on the height in, in terms of the way to, but the other impact it had in the design is that there's only windows in areas that could be shaded, so they didn't have heat in the summer, and that also only in view areas, so like, here we have windows facing this western, viewed towards the river, but we don't have windows on this side. So some of the abstraction that I just wanted to point out is related to the, to the thing they have passing. But are you going to look at the, uh, proposed, I mean, the same.
No, no, no. So it's on the bottom of that sheet, is that the side here?
This is a view facing south, right, so south would be, so here you can see that, um, some, some of the, uh, you know, what actually made me help was a group of, just to show which, uh, is. A lot of tacks going across this. But this portion of it is the three story portion and this portion of it is the one story portion.
Oh, that makes it more clear.
Yeah, so, and it, it still doesn't, it's still not, but, yeah. Uh, but the, uh,
So we see it being built, oh my gosh, what are we, what are we going to do?
The, the other thing to think of that was shown, that is shown in the, that is, that is, that is, that is, a, um, section through the street where you see not only is the, you know, the house, the thirty five feet of the proposed house is from the low point to the high point, it's in a sunken lot, so as you approach, you know, there's a thing, the, basically the second floor of this proposed building, you know, this, this piece, the second floor is about in the floor level of the house across the street and the first floor level, so it's almost kind of a big level.
Is it a hundred forty two, most of the other numbers?
Uh, yes. It should be sufficient for the coming warming.
So that's about the front yard approach, what was that? Front yard.
The front, the front yard approachment is.
Fifty required, forty one point nine is forty.
Forty one point nine.
That's the proposed.
That's.
What's existing?
Forty five seven.
Forty five seven. So then again, the difference in that is only that wall, which is effectively below where you're running right now.
In the, in your remarks though, there you said existing non-conforming, no change, there is in fact the change from the forty five to the forty one.
Um, the wall, the retaining wall that's there now, that's doing the same work that I proposed is, is, um, there's slightly more soil in front of it, so in was measuring that, it's under six feet, so because of our configuration of the driveway, it's going a little bit deeper. The height of the wall has not changed, technically, right, there is a change there, but the, the change is really in how that, that was being interpreted.
Okay, I just, you know, modestly attempted when the numbers were different, they stay not changed.
No, 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 it makes the backside. We should have.
John, looking at your proposed pool details, which is eight, two, oh. What, what is this slide clearance area inside deck?
That, uh, so the pool, again, let's take some, the, the pool is a natural pool, if you've seen them, they look like ponds, and, um, so there is, with the natural pool, there's a raised, uh, area, which is a regeneration area where the water gets pumped up and it gets put through a filter and a natural, so there's no chemicals associated with it. And there's a deck spanning that regeneration area, so there's stairs up to the deck and then a slide, the owner is very much into the slide. So this slide clearance area is, this is a, like, if you've seen them built into the ground plane and it's a slide for kids, but it's built into the, it's like this little lump of soil that's there.
So it's, it's not elevated, it's built into the ground?
No, it's, it's, yeah.
It's following the hot floor of the ground?
The ground, yes, yeah. So this, this whole area, if you look on the topo for this, this whole area is elevated, um, it's up. Boy, do you remember what the elevates, it's about four feet above grade here.
Yeah, seven, less than.
Right, so by trying to get down to here, it's like a six foot slide to drop into the pool. So it's kind of a tier, the pool is a tiered configuration as it shows. Here it's very light and it's strong, so I think this is what the problem is, you're not seeing it, it breaks.
But it's not before anyway, is it?
No, no, it's not, but just for, just for understanding what it is.
As long as it's counted.
Yeah.
My, my question is where that slide and what goes on into the pool, I think we have this swimming pool and the regeneration pool is part of your telling analysis, I don't see the.
That, that current is there versus.
That slide right there?
Yeah, that's the slide. So all the coverage associated with this form is protected.
Looking, looking over twenty again, I think this is my problem, if you could. So you've got a, a rectangle, which says biological filter, removable panel, removable panel, do you see that?
Right.
What is that?
So that, that's also a deck, that's the lower deck, so that also counts as coverage and below these removable panels in the deck is a pump, there's a pumps chamber and that has second, uh, so that's actually a curtain, or where's it?
Section.
Oh, that's a piece.
Right here, right on.
Oh, here, you can see this in this section, there's a pump in here and then this is a, uh, a separate, uh, biological filter.
Okay, then the extent of the pool is, is much larger than that, right?
Yes, so this, this, uh, curved shape here and the straight line here is the extent of the water. This here is deck, this is stairs up, this second deck, this is water with plants in it, this is a slide. This piece is a retaining wall and actually underneath here is a little cave.
And if you could look on C one.
It's followed by zeros.
There are two rectangular, almost rectangular areas on this drawing, one, I think, said Holtek inspection port.
Is it these two, Chris?
Yeah. One of those.
That is, uh, stormwater system for the house underground.
Underground.
Chambers, and that's a separate one for the footing drains.
Also underground.
Also underground.
Okay.
This, this piece here, uh, this rectangle here is underground pipe that's acting as a system, like this right here.
A lot going on. For problems on, let's say. Explain to me, I mean essentially, if you're going to tear down the existing house where you are, and you come in with three stories, which are forty percent or so of the structure you want to put out, the other sixty percent is two story. I mean, why, why is it necessary to break the rules on stories, this is essentially a new building?
The, the, the reason we requested the stories was the, the, what we tried to do is stay with the, underneath the height limit, which we've done in the past, and our goal was to not have, um, any, uh, impact on river views or have a, a greater impact than the, the thirty five foot level. What we did when we, uh, designed it was try to limit the functions of the third level to the, uh, master suite. If we went forward, if you tried to fit this all on a single level below, uh, what ended up happening is you would have bigger footprint, that would cost more and have a bigger environmental impact. We did look at a version that had a garage, it was a separate building and, um, other pieces and, you know, it's, it's a more expensive, it's, it's a more cost effective approach for something like this to build on top of an existing foundation than it would be to add more foundations or more footing. Uh, they're also wanting to capture the view from the second level, uh, from the master suite. But again, when we put this together from a volume perspective, we tried to limit the volume of the second floor to something that was similar to, uh, walls as air, first of all, like the ridge height of the existing building, but then also, you know, not accommodate our footprint with it.
And that's the third story coming across at the slope from the back?
Uh,
So from the front, can we see the front?
Yeah, the, the front of the house is only two story, right, so.
This is a level property, right, and that's sloped down, it'll be related to two stories of the floor, right?
Yeah, the third story is really only related to the, okay, so there's the, the way to see that is, uh,
So you want a third story, you got one up, it's really a third story coming down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When the basement is exposed, like you can see, uh, this is kind of a condition that shows, the ground, the ground plane is not clear in here, but I mean, I think what you're seeing is this is the, the basement level, the grade, the existing grade from the front yard is here, the existing grade from the rear yard is here, so if you count it from the front yard, you really have a two story building, where only a portion of it is two stories, that, you know, and then the other thing, the road is up here. So again, for buildings in the whole, we thought that, that, um, the impact was not that great.
There's a lot of that in there, I can imagine.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's lots of examples, especially on slope blocks, I mean, we, the house that we did on Dogwood Lane, which, um, stepped down the slope that had silver panels, you know, sort of had, and that, that was a similar condition where it was one story, there's a portion of it three stories and a portion of it's two stories that's stepped down. This is similar, but the orientation is kind of tiny, you're saying.
Tell me again why you couldn't achieve at least most of what you wanted to achieve with a two and a half story building? Either by limiting the, uh, the basement, which at this point is a big garage, two bedrooms and bathroom.
Right.
Or eliminating the third story, right?
The third story, well, there, you, one of the, one of the things that we looked at, especially with this kind of modern idiom, is if you did, um, like a gabled roof condition there instead of a flat roof, what ends up happening is in order to get the usable space on that, you need more of it. So that there's more efficiency, because you end up with a narrower condition, more volume and less of it being used. There's more efficiency in a flat roof condition, so one of the things, right, early on, we, we looked at this as, you know, you could do a two and a half story building where what you end up doing is you have one full story at the living level, you have a full story at the basement level and you're forced to do something like this, a half story at the level.
Like they do in the house, right?
Right, so but that's, that, that space wasn't occupied, it was an attic. So to occupy the spaces, you end up with this, with a condition where you have, all of the usable space ends up being very narrow down the center of the footprint and, um, then you have dormers in it and other stuff, so in order to get the same kind of functionality, you'd end up with more, more half story. And if you look again at the impact on view, this is what we tried to do here.
What shift?
Right, um, where we, we removed the half story from one side of the building and only put the, uh, second story on the other side. If that makes sense, so in terms of.
You guys say that again, I'm sorry. Probably get the impact itself, so.
Yeah, it's, it's just to try to get, um.
Plus the aesthetics of the structure, right, you got building gabled roof to build in.
Right, it would have been a very different, I mean, we could have still done a modern gable thing, it's just a harder, it was a harder thing and it would have had, we think, a greater visual impact, so here, but right now, there was, um, from here to here, there is a half story. Right, in the building, that's the foundation of the existing building, there's a gable end here and there's a half story here.
Okay.
So we removed that and then put all of our use in this area for the, for the master suite. If we wanted to put this much use, what would have ended up happening is you would have had this gable would need to be much bigger, it's longer, it's all hallways and sort of inefficient because your workings in that triangle.
In order to make it livable.
To make, to make, to get to the same volume of space. And what we, if we were going to fill this area, you know, which there was no building here, we were going to fill this height over here, we just wanted to make sure to give something back on that side.
And the homes that are on either side, I don't know, you, you done this analysis though, and I don't know, was on the other side, are they similar, like three stories?
Yeah.
Because all the basements drop off, it's out there.
Yeah, there's, you know, the problem we have with something, it's ea, it's easier for, to do coverage analysis on adjacent buildings, these we have to get onto people's site to check what they are, because we don't have photos all the way around. But given the grades around the area, I'm sure there, you know, we know that the, the, the gable on a house, um, which is a very large house that's in that area, is certainly three stories at the back, there's a lot of conditions, and it would be a full three, it's actually three and a half, because it has the attic on top.
At the root, but not the front.
Yeah, the front, it's got to be two and a half. It's not a, it's not a typical condition for that, that they'll look like that.
Or Irvington for the most part, like that. We've got a provision in the code which says, you could grant an area of variance, it's got to be the minimum necessary. How do you meet that requirement?
Uh, you know, that's always a difficult thing for us to argue, because houses of this scale, it's very hard to say that anything is minimal, you could live without a master suite or a master bath or any of that, so I think what, what we would focus on here in terms of the area of variance is that, um, we try to limit the impact and we think that the impact of the neighboring properties is, um, less compared to the benefit that it is to the, to the user of this property. I think, you know, it's hard for us to say like that, that, you know, the, the minimum, the minimum would be to build a, you know, a much smaller house. I think you could always get, get by with less, but we think that the, that the approach that we took was a sensitive approach to try to minimize the impact of it. And it's sort of in the, in the spirit of the two and a half stories also, like trying to say that, you know, the, the two and a half story code is written, uh, I think with gable roofs in mind, and we were trying to stay sort of similar to the ridge height of the existing building and, um, not fill the whole space from head to end with the roof, that's the way I think we tried to minimize it. It's hard to make those arguments like with this pool, it's sort of, you don't really need.
That's purely candy.
You know, it, it's a difficult, it's a difficult position for us to be in, because, you know, all of this is, um, depending on your length, is something that's hard to argue. It has a very, you know, part of the height related to this building and part of the design relates to this building is, is related to this, um, passive house model. And we do think that's a benefit for the area of the community. You know, the, the benefit, there is, how do you say, it's the benefit also of having this kind of modeling, of an example of this in Irvington, it does mean that other people start to say like, oh, this, we can do this, it's not that hard to do.
Give me another word or two about the ETA Fargo, I'm, I'm a little bothered by that, I must admit, because it sounds to me like a form somebody would use if they were going to build this kind of a house, then flip it.
Yeah, I should tell them that, because I had, I had a similar conversation with them, they're not, they're, they are, he's a, um, he is a mechanical engineer in New York City, they are moving their family here for the schools, this is the, the, um, place that they live. I think they had, uh, they have a house in, again, now it's not going to help with my argument about excess, but they have a house in Montauk, uh, and they built that house with a similar sense that maybe they would flip it or something like that. So I think this is a model that they have used in the past, but I would not, they're definitely coming here. Especially also with the, the investment in assistance on a house with this system, that would make sense to build this specific house, this is.
He likes the slides, he likes the slides. Why do you go, we'll pay the, why we build a slide like that?
That's right.
No, no, I, no, no, I heard it's not for adults, just for kids, as soon as the slide move.
All right, well, now we go to say yes.
Hey, I, I think I'm more bothered by what am I missing?
Yeah. I, I don't think, there's not, there's nothing to miss, I, I don't know.
What's the, what's the advantage to being an LLC, owning the property?
Quite a bit.
Like, yeah, that's what we.
Also, from estate planning purposes to conceal, not conceal assets, but shield assets from, from Medicare, Medicaid, other things sometimes, or for estate planning, trusts and things of that sort. I'm all about that, what, all? You think it's not, it's liability for that, for that slide, is what I'm thinking.
I feel a little bit, maybe we need to talk to you about some stuff.
Three houses in it, and then if you write something.
Uh, yeah, we've seen it a long time ago.
Tax implications.
We have, we have, it's been an LLC, it's.
Yeah, we've had that before.
Before.
And I would say when you see the mailings, you'd be surprised to know how it's written.
Yes, I agree, they are, yeah.
I don't think, I don't think this is a house that has the look of a flip, you know, or, or the investment of a flip.
Right, right.
You know, if he was going to flip this house, he probably would have done something. I mean, we're going through a lot of steps, especially with planning board, with approvals, you know, with design, you know, sticking, I mean, he's investing a lot on the passive house, you know.
The way the system alone is not something you could put in this book, huh?
What is it going to cost?
It's, it's, uh, uh, three, it's going to be between three hundred, four hundred dollars a square foot, that's what it's going to be. It's a little bit closer to three hundred because of the reuse of the existing foundation and stuff like that, but it's, it's not. The thing is, from our perspective, we have passive house consulting, we haven't done a passive house yet, so we're doing this detailing to me that looks, you know, it looks expensive and we're being assured by our consultant.
That's a pretty reasonable price.
That, that, right. Yeah, the other thing is there's almost, there's, there's things on the interior are already being pulled out, so most, most. That, that, right. The other thing is, there's almost, there's, there's things on the interior are already being pulled out, so most, most likely the, um, finishes and the development of the basement is probably going to have to wait to a future phase dependent budget.
Solar, some places.
You know, there isn't any solar on it right now. It had to do with the, the tree shading in the area. There's been, you know, there's not, uh, there's something we've come to with solar built in. It was high enough that, you know, at least you get some kind of measurable amount. This one, uh, did not seem like it was a great opportunity for photovoltaic.
Well, you've only got five inches, that may not be enough.
Yeah, and, and you, you could put them flat on the roof, and, but there was a loss of, um, efficiency if we left them flat on the roof. We may still consider, the thing is, is in, just in the grand scheme of things for the planet, that's the thing you could do is super insulated. And that's already been proved, like, doing solar, and the thing we did on, on, um, I'm forgetting where it is, the, the other thing that we had to show we kind of solar panels as part of the decking and stuff like that. The effect of that compared to super insulated building is like, you know, ten percent.
A surprising percentage of energy consumption in this country comes from heating, is a, this is like.
Thirty-five.
Yeah, surprisingly high.
Yeah, this is a system that was developed in Germany, and so there is an American, uh, it's something that's going to have to be certified. So there's a, we have a consultant on board, but that is independently certified that it needs to be a passive house. And part of what's driving it is that this guy Evan is a mechanical engineer in the city. I think he wants to put his money where his mouth is and sort of say, look, I'm in a passive house, you know, as a mechanical engineer, it's sort of something.
Let me say, if his name is Evan, we're not voting.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I'm, I'm, this is the first time I've been involved in questions of two-and-a-half stories. Is there a history here that would help me understand it? I've, I, I read the requirement, but I, um, it's not something that I say, oh, yeah, that makes sense.
The two-and-a-half stories.
Yeah, as opposed, yeah, as opposed to that requirement.
There are epistles in the village who have the same motion. I mean, it's not, it's, it's been on the books for quite a long time. But there are, there are exceptions that have been applied primarily because it depends on which side of the house, on a slope you look at.
I see.
There's some houses that will fall, fall under that requirement, uh, and what to do.
There's, that's sort of a suite of regulations right now that I think may have been put in the code to promote cable roofs. They've been modified, and we've had a discussion about the acts they've been modified in such a way that they're not actually working to promote cable roofs. And this is one of those, I think, that would be something if we looked at the zoning code again, to say like, is it in the interest of the cable roofs anymore? And if not, then maybe some of this should just be cleaned up and either go to.
Well, in this case, it's not promoting cable roofs if we let you do it. We said, no, you can't do it, right?
Right.
Like what you proposed, maybe you wouldn't.
Right, and that's the thing, the argument of this, is that the impact of the gable roof in this case would be greater visual impact.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah, that's the only thing I can think that, you know, was placed at the time was to try to promote it. Able to, the attic code that we have right now does the opposite of promoting cable roofs, because, um, how it counts the space underneath an attic is a hundred percent.
If it's real attic with a stair.
Right, right.
Um, I, I've got to say, I am, I am bothered by the three-stories aspect to this. But your explanation has, I can't say satisfying. So I'm not going to object on that basis. Um, I know you and Earl can put together a building that would provide a lot of attractive details and still be two-and-a-half stories. Um, and it's sort of, I mean, I'm trying to imagine if somebody came into the village, planning board and to us, and as a house being built, and this, you know, and said, we want to do three stories, I said, two and a half. I think it'd be a, a tough sell.
No, the slopes, right, if they came in with that with a flat site, and we have to do that, I think I could see that. Again, I think the mitigating factor is here on the slope side, you know, the, and I don't think we would be in front of you if it, we didn't have the slope side. And then also the, the fact that the relationship to the street is already a story now.
And you're looking for a height variance. Much of the height also is based on the personal footage you needed for, talked about the, uh, method of, right?
Yeah.
So there's a lot of, there's a lot of positives to it.
Yeah.
If you're going to do it, this might be the exact reason why you do it.
Right.
The insulation is more achieved.
I'm sorry, really. To reach the, the goals of the insulation standard is, is better with a flat roof than it is a gable roof.
Yeah.
Structurally and every other way, R values and everything.
Okay. All right. Without as much enthusiasm as usual, I will move to approve the application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Vote in the right, John.
Oh, yes.
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 Yes, thank you then.